Hey, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the 2024 PFOS Water Cycle Public Hearing Event for New Jersey. Green Water Council is hosting. We have quite a turnout. I believe we have some more people probably trickle in after the hour. But in order to get started, I just want to introduce myself. I'm John Murray, kind of a representative for DEP, for the Director's Office. And yes, I want to just make a quick introduction of our Green Water Council representatives, formal and informal appointments at the moment. I'll lead off with Tony McCracken, who is our chairperson. If you could just put your hand up and smile, that would be wonderful. And then we'll proceed just a quick introduction. We don't want to kill too much time here. The vice chair of the council currently is Jim Cosgrove. He's here representing the Society of Professional Engineers. Going down the list, we have, I believe, everybody, most folks are here. Krishna Jagannathan, Department of Labor. Say hi. Samantha DeAndrea. She should be here. Not sure if Marianne Holden from BPU is here or not. It's hard to see everybody's names on the side here, but I'll just go right down the list. Let's see. Frank Minch, is he present? I'm having a hard time scrolling here. Other members, we have Chris Andreessen from the Water Policy and Supply Commission. Dave Kovak.
Morning.
Thank you, Chris. Dave Kovak.
I saw him here.
DRBC, thank you. Amy Goldsmith. I know she's here. Excellent.
I'm here, yeah.
Did Pam make it? No, not yet. Ashley Kerr. From the Farm Bureau. Nope. Aaron Stoller. Business and Industry. No, okay. And Harry Bozink from League of Municipalities, did you make it, Harry?
Here, welcome, everybody.
Maria Connolly. Association of Counties. Excellent, excellent. I know we have Wally, I had a Wally, I think is his last name. One of our frequent public participants is also here. But yes, that should be everybody from our typical gathering being called out. Yeah, appointments, formal appointments will be worked on this winter, and we will have that all shored up shortly. Go ahead, Tony, take it away.
All right. Thank you all for, you know, for coming, really, well, coming video wise, but it's good. I'm glad everybody was able to make it that's here. And please note that, you know, my name is Anthony McCracken. I'm nationally certified American Institute Certified Planners as a land use planner and licensed in the state of New Jersey as professional planner. I've been on the council for many years. And I retired about two years ago, which, you know, which is actually kind of nice. But staying involved with important issues like this council, I was the deputy director of planning for the County of Somerset for many years. Anyway, check out for the attendees, please check out our website. You'll learn a lot about the Clean Water Council. It's a 17-person council representing so many different variety of issues that affect business, industry, environment, and such. So we're pretty progressive that way. We meet once a month. Our agendas and also our notes from our meetings are on the website. We're here today to talk about the PFOS cycle. So third time we're talking about PFOS for a public hearing. The first one had to do with, you know, discharges of surface water. The second one had to do with water wastewater residuals. And now, you know, we're thinking that we should talk about the whole cycle, the whole wastewater cycle, and what that's about and kind of put a framework around this issue. We're looking forward to your comments. Please, we're identifying January the 15th as the date to receive your comments in writing. If you're not speaking today, please do so. If you are going to speak today, please provide that list to us online here so we can see who is interested in giving us comments. When the comments come in, we're going to wrap them all up and provide a communication to our commissioner and offer these suggestions that have come in and then also from the council, you know, will be suggested. So with that, we're going to kick off the meeting. And is the commissioner now available?
Yes.
All right. So every year we have the commissioner come out and speak to us and give us, you know, an overview of what's going on in the subject. He's very interested in the subject, and I welcome him. The council welcomes his participation, and thank you so much. Sean Lottoiret, Commissioner of Department of Environmental Protection. He was appointed by Philip Murphy back in 2021, and he's responsible for formulating statewide environmental policy and directing programs to protect the public health, ensure the quality of New Jersey air, water, natural resources, historic resources. He's a lawyer and policymaker with over 20 years of experience in environmental protection. He served in executive roles and as trusted advisor to governments, communities, nonprofit organizations, leaders in industry and infrastructure, while also litigating high stakes lawsuits involving environmental energy and public health concerns. He has developed and led initiatives to prioritize environmental justice while facilitating greenhouse gas emissions reductions, climate chain resilience, adaptation of renewable energy deployment, water infrastructure enhancements, brownfields redevelopment, community renewal, and natural resource conservation and restoration. Guided by a deep commitment to equity and professional philosophy in unifying economic development, environmental improvement, provides for public good. He was born and raised in New Jersey. Commissioner Lottoiret graduated mega cum laude from Rutgers University, earned his law degree, soma cum laude from Rutgers University, where he was class albataurian and also recipient of multiple environmental governmental awards and published scholarship on environmental law, natural resource damage, and climate issues. And, you know, again, he has been very supportive of our group and also of this topic. And, you know, we're lucky to have him here to speak to us again. So with that, Commissioner Lottoiret, thank you for coming, and we look forward to your presentation.
Well, first of all, Tony, thank you for that kind introduction. And it is a pleasure to join you all this morning. As many who have gotten to know me over the years probably already know, I so very much value the input and the contributions to the important work that the DEP does from all across the sectors of our economy and civil society and to every council member who is so generous with their time and their talents to help inform the good work that happens through this group. I really, really deeply thank you. To the DEP staff, you know, I love you. Thank you for organizing this continuing series on PFOS and our water cycle. I know we've got colleagues from the US EPA, the State of Michigan, water sector leaders, including from Middlesex Water Company and the Somerset Raritan Valley Sewerage Authority. Thank you for preparing and sharing your knowledge and your experiences with this audience and through this important public hearing, where we are, as Tony said, devoted to advancing the conversation on actions that will protect our waters and our natural resources from the risks of PFOS chemicals that are circulating so widely throughout our environment. And I also want to thank the members of the public and participants that are joining here today for taking the time to listen, to offer testimony, because your voices and your input is so very important. We've always valued that participation from all across our most diverse state in the nation. From our environmental advocates to our government representatives, to our industry reps and those who are here representing all different parts of the water sector, as it were, from drinking water to wastewater and stormwater, we thank you so very much. Look, we recognize, right, that we've got to be vigilant and smart in how we protect our water and our other natural resources against these and so many other chemical pollutants, those that are emerging or have already emerged. And this meeting, as Tony mentioned, is the third in the series of Clean Water Council public hearings on the topic of PFOS. And to date, we've received really valuable testimony and feedback from the council in our meetings in 2021 and 2023. And here at DEP, we know that PFOS is going to continue to be a priority for us in the years ahead. We've established ourselves as a national leader in responding to PFOS through regulatory approaches and through our expectation that those who have caused the circulation of these harmful chemicals will step forward and be accountable, whether that's because we've negotiated with those contributing parties or if we've had to file litigation. Overall, we're doing what we do best. We're problem solving, right? Working to protect our residents and the environment. Just a couple of notable achievements, thanks to the good work through groups like this and others. DEP established a maximum contaminant level for three PFOS in drinking water. We've expanded testing of private wells that are subject to sale or lease under the Private Well Testing Act. We've established groundwater quality standards for those three constituents, PFOA, PFOS, PFNA. We've added them to the list, New Jersey's List of Hazardous Substances, as well as to the list of what's required for testing under the Private Well Testing Act. And we've pursued several points of enforcement action and litigation to hold manufacturers and industrial users and discharges accountable for the injury that they've caused. We've encouraged dischargers in our wastewater sector to submit data to help us identify and reduce PFOS in wastewater and in its residuals. And we also developed and released a PFOS data collection webpage that includes guidance for how to submit that data. If you are joining us from parts of the water sector and you haven't yet started sharing your information broadly that you're collecting with the DEP, we encourage you to do that, right? This is your invitation if you were waiting for one. And look, we've also, at the same time, we've been working to collect that information and analyze it so that we can deeply understand occurrence. As of just a few months ago, we've issued permits from our Division of Water Supply and Geoscience for 105 PFOS treatment permits, 79 unique water systems. And as of the closing of our last fiscal year, 19 projects have been funded through our water bank, totaling over $165 million in loans and over $45 million in principal forgiveness. And this is the work, right? And that work keeps going with a full head of steam. We are in the midst of preparing a rule proposal for surface water quality standards for PFOA, for PFOS, and for PFNA to protect human health and aquatic life. And we're working to incorporate federal regulations that were adopted for six PFOS compounds that are going to work a lower standard and working closely with our water systems to ensure compliance, understanding that that change is very much upon us. And at the same time, working to propose some specific groundwater quality standards for Gen X based on interim-specific groundwater quality criteria. And also working on a replacement compound for PFNA to the same end for groundwater. Now, today we want to continue this discussion, right? With an emphasis on PFOS throughout the water cycle, as you heard. And since our last public hearings on this topic, we've made some major strides toward the goal of addressing PFOS in our drinking and wastewater systems. You heard some of those actions just now. Some others include working with our delegated local agencies in order to reduce PFOS contributions from industrial users. Again, encouraging all those in the water sector to work on submitting their data. And we're implementing a strategy for sampling at active landfills with monitoring wells and evaluating landfill leachate that's discharged to non-delegated POTWs. So before we move on to the public testimony for today's meeting, we have two presenters today that have put together some really great and informative presentations. So we're thrilled to welcome the State of Michigan and Middlesex Water Company on their experiences with tackling PFOS in water and biosolids. And their presentation is going to be followed by a panel discussion with other leaders in the water sector to gain more insight on tackling these challenges and prioritizing and addressing PFOS in the water cycle. And, you know, with that, I want to thank again everyone for your time, for your attendance, and just double down on the fact that your input is essential as we work together to improve and protect the public health and the environment that we all share. Thank you so much for your time, for your attention, and your important work.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. You know, you're always welcome to come and speak with us, and thank you for your continued support of our program. And obviously, you know, your passion for the subject is admirable, and thank you for coming and speaking with us again. Yeah, as the Commissioner mentioned, we're going to have some presentations first. We're going to have a break, and we're going to have some panel discussions after that to discuss various topics that we're looking, you know, to get your input on. And then we're going to open it up for public testimony, and we'll talk more about that as we get to that point. First, we're going to have a presentation by Susan Rosenwinkel. She's a department employee, and she is Director of the Division of Water Quality at New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Water Quality. She has primary responsibility for protecting New Jersey's surface and groundwater pollution caused by improperly treated wastewater residuals through the New Jersey Gyptees Program. The Division of Water Quality also administers financial assistance and programs for wastewater treatment facilities, as well as treatment works approval, capacity assurance, sewer service bans. Susan's with the department for 35 years. Obviously, she knows what she's talking about. She has a degree in the College of Engineering from Rutgers University. And with that, Sue, thank you for speaking with us today.
Thank you very much. A pleasure to be here as always. So as Tony mentioned, I'm the Director of the Division of Water Quality, which is comprised of essentially two halves. One is the Water Pollution Management Element, and that is the group that is primarily responsible for New Jersey pollutant discharge elimination system permits. And then we also have the Municipal Finance and Construction Element. And I'm going to ask our Assistant Director to say hello.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Charles Jenkins. I'm the Assistant Director of Municipal Finance and Construction Element. The Commissioner gave you a snapshot of the funding we provide. I'll drop a link into the chat, and if anyone has questions, please reach out.
So the Division of Water Quality is just over 130 people, and let's get started. Next slide, Christine. Okay, this is why we're here. I had attended a conference, gosh, it was shortly after COVID ended, because I remember people were still wearing masks, but it was in Washington DC. And I got a great piece of advice at that conference, and that is you can't think about a regulatory action on PFOS without thinking of all the other steps that come after that. And nothing really displays that better than the PFOS water cycle. So this is where PFOS comes from, how it interconnects, and that's, of course, what we hope to talk about today. Next slide. Okay, and I have 17 slides. They're pretty high level, so I really should be less than 10 minutes, and then we'll move to the next presenter. So let's talk a little bit about wastewater. That is what the Division of Water Quality primarily does. Next slide. This is our overall strategy to target the source. That looks easy, right? But it's not so simple. We need to identify, reduce, and eliminate PFOS at the source. It's important to catch the PFOS before it enters the POTW, because once it enters the POTW, you know, you have a bigger problem. So this is sort of our overall objective in the wastewater program. We have a website. The department has an excellent website on PFOS. We actually have our own website, because there's just a lot of information. And you can see the website at the bottom, and you can see we have these different topics. We have discharge to surface water and pretreatment permitting. That's your classic discharge of surface water, and I'm going to get into that first. We also have discharges to groundwater, residuals, biosolids, and sewage sludge, PFOS data collection. I'm also going to talk about that. And then, of course, there is the card for the overall Department PFOS website. Okay, surface water and pretreatment. This is the Bureau of Surface Water Pretreatment Permitting Program, and there's two very big components that that group does, and that are industrial facilities that are discharging treated wastewater directly to surface water, and that could be a source of PFOS. And then for the pretreatment side, there could be industrial facilities discharging wastewater to a POTW. And then industrial facilities regulated by a delegated local agency. And we have 17 delegated local agencies in New Jersey that are authorized to permit their own industrial users. Also, we also have POTWs can also transmit PFOS to the surface water body. Okay, these are the facts. Publicly owned treatment works do not typically use or generate PFOS. PFOS pretty much comes to them and it passes through. Conventional treatment technology is not designed to remove PFOS. Treatment technology for PFOS at POTWs may not be viable at this time, although information is certainly evolving. And then, again, treatment technologies for POTWs is emerging, but more research is needed. So these are things that we think about from the regulatory perspective. Next slide. We do have some data. We don't have enough data, so I'll get to that in a second. But these are what the information is telling us thus far. We have both short chain PFOS and long chain PFOS. The ones that seem to be the most frequently detected are PFHXA or C6, PFHPAC7 or PFOAC8. Next slide. Let's move over to the PFOS data collection. And as the Commissioner said, it is very important that we share information, because it's hard for us to understand the scope of the problem if we don't have data. Next slide. All right, so on January 17th, 2023, Commissioner Lottoiret issued Administrative Order 2023-01. And the purpose of this administrative order is to encourage the collection of data that will aid in the department's efforts to identify, reduce, and eliminate sources of PFOS in wastewater as residuals. It is on our website. We've got it in lots of places on our website, and this is, of course, what it looks like. Next slide. This is our PFOS data collection. We saw the card at the beginning of the website. And basically, again, here's the link to the administrative order, and we have a couple of resources. We have a PFOS data entry template, and then we have a PFOS data collection and submission guidance document. And this is what that looks like. The data collection, the submission guidance, that kind of would guide the performaty as to how to submit the data. We want the data to be consistent. We want to make sure all the questions are answered. And then there's the data entry template, and this comes in through a dedicated mailbox. And it's typically entered into the database by one person to ensure consistency. It happens to be the same person, Bennett Moss, who built the database. So please send us your data. Moving over to groundwater. Groundwater is a little bit different than surface water. Next slide. Groundwater. So groundwater is different, because we have three PFOS groundwater quality standards, and our targeted approach for groundwater right now is for industrial facilities discharging treated wastewater groundwater and also the sanitary facilities that are discharging greater than 100,000 gallons per day. Slide. And again, similar to surface water, this is sort of the approach. We are modifying permits to include PFOS monitoring. Important step, we review the data, check the units, and contact the performaty if corrections are needed. The groundwater performaty universe isn't always familiar with the lab sheets and the units, and PFOS is definitely a little bit different than the typical parameters. So this data is expensive. We want to make sure that it's properly submitted to us so that it's usable for us. Next step would be to adjust the monitoring frequency and include additional PFOS parameters if applicable. We would review the data again, and then potentially we could include limits for groundwater quality standards, PFNA, PFOA, and PFOS if data warrants. The good news is that we're really not seeing high levels of PFOS in the Gyptees groundwater data. Next slide. These are the groundwater PFOS standards. We've got PFNA, which is 13 parts per trillion, January 16th, 2018, PFOA, 14 parts per trillion, June 1st, 2020, and PFOS, 13 parts per trillion, June 1st, 2020. And that's it. So again, Christine, can you go back to the data collection slide? Go back like three. One more. Okay, if there's one take home message for today, please get us your data. We have gotten, we started a little slow. We've gotten a little bit data recently, but it's important that we can look at this data, analyze it, and figure out trends. So definitely get us your information. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Our next presentation is a gentleman from the State of Michigan, Christian Smith. He's going to talk about wastewater and biosolids perspectives on that issue. Let me see. Christian Smith earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Microbiology from Michigan State University, 2018, followed by a Master of Science in Biological Sciences from Western Michigan University in 2022. He's currently employed with the Water Resource Division, Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes Energy, serving in the Emerging Pollutant Section. His role includes acting as a statewide contact for per and polyfluoroalkylides. PFOS is much easier to say. In biosolids and also providing sources and application reduction support for non-industrial pretreatment wastewater treatment plants affecting PFOS. So with that, thank you, Christian, for sharing your thoughts with us today.
Thanks for the nice introduction. So, like you said, my name is Christian Smith. I work for the State of Michigan and the Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy in the Emerging Pollutant Section of the Water Resources Division, and I focus on biosolids and the non-IPP wastewater treatment plants typically. So again, we're talking about the PFOS cycle here. I think some of us are familiar with from that previous presentation about how PFOS tends to move throughout the environment. What I'm going to be focusing on today are source reduction efforts through our IPP PFOS initiative. So with reducing PFOS at the source from PFOS producing or using industries to prevent discharge to wastewater treatment plants. Then I also, we're touching on some of the data we have for discharge from discharge from wastewater treatment plants to the surface water and also the land application of biosolids containing PFOS interim strategy for the work we have conducted over the past few years. To start out, so Michigan does have established surface water criteria for drinking and non-drinking water sources for five PFOS compounds. We also have groundwater criteria as well. Those are not included in the scope of this presentation, but you can see by the values we have for these surface water criteria that PFOS has been the driver to date for some of our regulatory action due to the relatively low surface water criteria compared to the other compounds that we regulate and to just the prevalence of PFOS that we tend to see in the wastewater industry. So for our timeline for some of these source production and efforts we put into the wastewater industry. So in 2018, Michigan ruled out the Industrial Pretreatment Program PFOS Initiative, which required, at the time, the 95 wastewater treatment plants that had IPP programs to screen industrial users for sources of PFOS. So to look at the industrial users they have in their collecting system and screen them to be. and screen them for to be at their potential or probable sources of PFOS to their collection system and ultimately to the treatment plant. Also, in two thousand eighteen, we conducted a statewide study of forty-two wastewater treatment plants, for example, affluent, effluent and residuals to try to get a grasp of the distribution of PFOS throughout the state. Uh, we targeted some of the largest treatment plants in the state, some medium sized ones and small facilities. Those, some with IPP programs, some without, try to have a good spread to get a understanding of what's out there. Then utilizing that statewide study data, we rolled out our land application of biosolids containing PFOS interim strategy in two thousand twenty-one. And both of these initiatives or strategies are still active today in two thousand twenty-four. For our industrial pre-treatment program PFOS initiative, again, we had those ninety-five treatment plants required to screen their industrial users. And then believe that number is up to one hundred treatment plants now. So they had to evaluate their IUs for potential sources, conduct sampling of those sources. Um, they needed to sample the whole treatment plant effluent. If the sources, they when they sample the industrial users, if those sources were above our screening criteria, which we decided to use our water quality values as a good screening level to identify if the sources are above that to then return, perform some more investigation of the treatment plant. Also to sample their the facilities associated residuals if their wastewater treatment plant effluent was greater than fifty parts per trillion. Because if we were seeing that much pass through, there's potential for accumulation on the residuals. And the main focus was to reduce, control and eliminate those P that PFOS discharge at the source as it is more cost effective to put treatment on at the more concentrated discharge at the source than to put that burden on the treatment plant to treat a diluted waste stream that ultimately they are receiving um at the influent or the headworks of the planet. Some of the sources that we've identified, we have a published document on the sources of PFOS wastewater treatment plants that's been published and working on updating it. Again, it's important to note that these wastewater treatment plants are passive receivers of PFOS. They're not typically using any products uh that are going to introduce PFOS or create. You know, or they're not generating the PFOS waste. They're performing a public utility and are receiving it from industrial, commercial and residential users on the collection system. And these are just some examples of the treatment plants or the sources of PFOS we've seen of treatment plants in the state of Michigan. Now I'd like to highlight the success of a few industrial, of some industrially impacted facilities um in the state of Michigan identified both through the IPP PFOS initiative and the and that statewide study. But you can see here with treatment put in place at the at the industrial user for these wastewater treatment plants. We've seen anywhere from a ninety-three to a ninety-nine percent reduction in PFOS um from that upstream source control. And then we also have seen pretty, uh, we have seen market decreases in PFOS concentrations and the facilities uh biosolids associated residuals as well. Seeing anywhere from an eighty-five to a ninety-nine percent reduction in the PFOS concentration. And I'm going to highlight these two facilities, number fifty-seven and number ninety-two. So I'll be highlighting um some other data that we have related to these facilities as well moving forward. So here, this is an association with wastewater treatment plant ninety-two with a, the treatment plants associated receiving body of water as these treatment plants are discharged into surface water in Norton Creek. And then also associated with that treatment plant, another tributary or another receiver, the actually associated fish tissue concentrations um that were being impacted by the discharge at the treatment plant. So this facility was receiving waste from a metal finisher, their chrome plater, which is uses PFOS as a as a fumes suppressant. You can see when they originally started receiving data, their affluent at the treatment or the affluent. Um, sorry, the surface water data that was being impacted by the facility affluent was around fifty-five hundred parts per trillion. If you remember, our surface water criteria is at twelve parts per trillion. And then there is one um, one instance of GAK put in place, so granular activated carbon. We see this market decrease in PFOS concentration. And then a redundant GAK was put in place to help further clean up that waste stream later on. We see these, the surface water concentrations have dropped from fifty-five hundred parts per trillion down to six point eight parts per trillion in this Norton Creek. And then with the fish associated, we see different types of fish, the filet, we saw this high there, this markedly high concentration of PFOS being impacted by the pass through through the treatment plant. And then when the GAK has been put in place, we've seen these concentrations drop off in real time, which is really promising. Um, for for our state, we do have a lot of fishing that occurs in the state of Michigan. And this just shows for both that wastewater treatment plant number ninety-two and number fifty-seven, these decreases and um fish tissue from upstream or up gradient source control put in place. So both of these facilities had source control put in place. Um, and we've seen these ninety-seven, or sorry, around a ninety percent reduction in average PFOS concentration in largemouth bass and for the Huron River and in um smallmouth bass in the Holloway Reservoir, the Flint River, associated with another wastewater treatment plant that had elevated affluent and residuals in the beginning. Now I'm going to switch gears and talk about the biosolids PFOS interim strategy. So in two thousand eighteen, like I said, we conducted that statewide study of influent, effluent and residuals. Um, this here is a graph showing the PFOS concentrations across that um statewide study. And it's important to note that the PF, the PFOS concentrations are on a log scale. So they're a factor of ten increase with each major break in the axis. And we see this, this knee of the curve is the the term we have used where there's this market increase in PFOS concentrations for these facilities that had known industrial users in some case, where we see these concentrations go from that median of about thirteen parts per billion to in some cases exceeding two thousand parts per billion or we could be measured in whole parts per million. So we use that information to determine our thresholds that we utilize in our interim strategy. Where originally in two thousand twenty-one, if biosolids were tested at a hundred and fifty parts per billion, we deemed that the beneficial reuse or the the benefits of those biosolids might not outweigh the risks at those concentrations. So they're prohibited from land application. And then we worked our way backwards to establish other thresholds for how those residuals need to be treated. And in two thousand twenty-one, we sent out individual letters to the three hundred facilities that have an approved residuals management program, which is required in the state to be able to land apply those residuals, these biosolids. So our goals of the strategy were to continue that's the the source identification and reduction efforts that had shown to be effective in the IPP PFOS initiative to prohibit the land application of industrially impacted biosolids. Continue to mitigate or reduce risk moving forward by evaluating new data and altering the way that facilities are able to land apply the residuals. And ultimately to inform not only the landowners and farmers, but also the wastewater treatment plants about the PFOS that they they may have in their affluent and residuals that they're not part of that IPP PFOS initiative. And as a government entity, we're always creating and retaining publicly available information. So how our strategy is set up, this is in two thousand twenty-four, so based on the PFOS and or PFOA results. If you're below twenty parts per billion, uh, you can land apply without restriction other than uh you need to submit those results to the to the state for review and submit the results to the landowner and farmer. Um, if those are different individuals, if you're there equal to or above twenty parts per billion but less than a hundred um for PFOS or PFOA, then you're required to sample your facility affluent and work upstream to identify sources. And you're required to mitigate during land applications. You're required to reduce your application rate to half of what we saw as a statewide average to one and a half dry tons per acre. Um, and then if you're above a hundred, that's our new industrially impacted tier, which we deemed that the benefits don't outweigh the risks and land application is prohibited at this case. And you're also required to sample facility affluent and identify sources. Here's the distribution of the data that we see in the state. So this includes both PFOS and PFOA for the facilities biosolids. And we can see a, we've seen a statewide average so far this year of about eight point four parts per billion for PFOS and four point nine for PFOA. So the the vast majority of facilities so far have been under our mitigation threshold and many are below five parts per billion. And here's just another way to visualize that data. We've had a hundred and seventy facilities submit results in two thousand twenty-four. And around ninety percent are in our below twenty parts per billions here and don't have further restrictions. But there are some that I currently work with to identify sources to try to bring these concentrations down. But here's some of the success we've seen so far with the combination of the biosolids strategy and IPP PFOS initiative. So we've been able to see this consistent decrease in mean and median of both PFOS and PFOA since we implemented the interim strategy in two thousand twenty-one. Um, and it's important to note that in two thousand twenty-four, um, we're still receiving data. Uh, but we have more results this year than we did in two thousand twenty-three, so we don't attribute that decrease in concentration to a lack of data. Uh, whereas we keep seeing these numbers drive, come farther and farther down, we hope to continue to see this trend moving forward as we continue to implement the strategy. Then building on uh the shortcomings of the IPP PFOS initiative. So the biosolids initiative was able to identify non-I P P wastewater treatment plants that are also having issues with PFOS or PFOA contamination in their treatment system. Um, so we, this has been very valuable information for us to know that's not just your industrial users. You're typical, there's other instances in the collection system that can lead to PFOS contamination and these facilities may not be excluded from any any PFOS work. Then in summary, so for both IPP PFOS initiative and biosolids interim strategy, we've shown that source controls are highly effective at reducing these elevated concentrations. Uh, ninety percent of all biosolids in Michigan fall below our mitigation threshold. And we have not had any industrially impacted biosolids land applied in Michigan since two thousand eighteen, since we identified those facilities in the statewide study. Um, we've had no new industrially impacted biosolids facilities. And overall, we continue to see PFOS and PFOA concentrations um decrease and affluent discharges and associated residuals. With that, I can turn over questions if there's time.
Thank you, Christian. You know, it's, it's good to hear what's going on in other areas of the country. I mean, you know, it's, it's um, we've been working in New Jersey, we've been working steadily on this issue, and then we see that you guys are keeping busy too for sure. So uh, it's much appreciated and we look forward to some of your other you know, presentations or comments and concerns that you're going to offer later on in the panel discussion as well. All right, uh, so moving on to our presentation three, we have uh Mark Taylor from the Middlesex Water Company. He's going to talk about drinking water perspectives. Mark, um, you know, has spoken with us before. He's a director of production and he's a licensed operator of record at the Middlesex Water Company and invests her own water utility in New Jersey. Mark graduated from Rutgers University with a degree in chemical engineering. Worked in New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection prior to joining Middlesex Water Company, two thousand sixteen. He's currently serves as a trustee of the New Jersey Section, the American Water A W W A. And Mark, uh, with that, thank you for presenting and take it away.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Um, thank you for inviting me to present today. Uh, I'm looking forward to sharing some of our experiences that we've had with managing PFAS as a water utility in New Jersey um and some of the challenges that we faced. So just a quick background, um, Middlesex Water Company, we are a private water utility that provides um water and wastewater services throughout New Jersey and Delaware. Um, the systems I'll be speaking about today, our central um operation serves uh almost roughly a half a million residents across Middlesex and Monmouth County. Excuse me. Um, so as I mentioned, our service area, um, serving across those two counties, primarily from two different sources. Um, our main source of supply is a surface water treatment plant located in Edison. Um, and then another auxiliary source is our Park Avenue Water Treatment Plant. Um, so I'll be primarily talking about that facility is that's well, what most of our PFAS experience has been around. Um, so that Park Avenue Water Treatment Plant um is one of the original sources of water for Middlesex Water Company. It's comprised of eighteen wells and was originally rated for sixteen million gallons a day. Uh, the core facility had been upgraded over the years, so there were some historic um trichloro and tetrachloroethylene contamination in the groundwater, so airstrippers were installed. Um, it's also being the, where the formation pulls from fairly hard water. So we have uh some treatment out there to help with some of that uh sequester, some of that hardness. Uh, and then originally we were disinfecting with gas chlorine and we do have some storage of finished water on site. Um, so Commissioner Lotteret kind of touched on this in his opening comments, but uh like most utilities across uh the state, we were dealing with some of the challenges. Our uh UCMR three sample results had shown that we had some elevated levels of PFOA. Uh, there was PFOS in the water as well, but it was below at the time what was the um recommended water quality standard from the Drinking Water Quality Institute. Um, and then the third perforate compound that New Jersey has regulated, uh PFNA was non-detect. Um, but we knew it was there and we knew we had to get the ball rolling, um, especially with the discussion of upcoming regulations. Um, so we went ahead and proceeded um with the assistance from a consultant to do some pilot testing. So just, you know, brief overview, especially at the time, um, what we were looking at really was limited to granular activated carbon and ion exchange and reverse osmosis. Um, the novel absorbance that you'll hear about, um, certainly were even more novel um years back. So initially in our discussions, we had ruled those out and we're really just looking at those um three treatment technologies you see on the screen. But due to that um really high hardness at that well field and at that site and some of the um constraints, pretty early on, we ruled out reverse osmosis. So that helped narrow it down just to granular activated carbon and anion exchange. So through two thousand nineteen, we did some bench scale pilot testing in conjunction with our consultants. Um, so ultimately they took seven hundred gallons of water pumped directly from the wells. Uh, they then ran that raw water through and the goal was to try and compare the performance of the GAC and and ion exchange. Um, we also, knowing that we had the background um contaminants of the PCE and TCE. Uh, we wanted to see the impact of that on the proposed treatment technology. There are also some low levels of hexavalan chromium, so we wanted to see if we could get any beneficial removal of that. Um, I mentioned that hardness sequestration, uh, we achieved that through the addition of a polyphosphate um chemical. So we wanted to make sure whatever treatment technology we selected there um would not have an impact. And then, you know, another big factor here was going to be operational costs and uh challenges with maintaining um this equipment, you know, how frequently are we going to have to be changing media out? So that bench pilot ultimately evolved into a field pilot. Um, after getting that valuable insight from the bench scale piloting, we decided that granular activated carbon was the right treatment technology for us. But um that only narrows it down so much. There's plenty of different granular activated carbon out there. Um, so this is a granular media that's created from carbon based sources. So it could be anything from lignite coal to coconut husks. Um, so you know, you need to factor that in when you're designing the treatment plant, what exactly is going to be the um type of carbon and the manufacturer that you're using. So we ran a twelve month field pilot um and looked at four different medias to look at the PFAS removal efficiency. Would we have any um issues with head loss? Meaning, is there going to be any stuff that's going to clog up those filters? Um, and and looking at the media change out frequency. So one of the benefits and uh one of the uh reasons I'll advocate to many water utilities to make sure you go through all these proper steps instead of just skipping and saying, okay, we're going with carbon, everybody else is doing it, we're going and on exchange. You know, it was recommended by another utility um and really make sure that you're going through the whole process. Um, is we identified that there was substantially more micro, microbiological activity than we had anticipated. Um, so you know, this is groundwater, um, not doesn't deal with the same challenges that our surface water treatment plant does as far as um microbiological activity. But we found that the airstrippers, you know, there's still that small trace amount that could be introduced. Um, we do have four log disinfection down the line. But just that small amount of um microbiological activity that was introduced was causing fouling um on those granular activated carbon absorbers. And the goal is we want the water as pure as it is before it goes into these absorbers because we're trying to remove chemicals that are down to a parts per trillion level. So that's really our, the goal is to have that be our last polishing step to absorb and remove these chemicals. Anything else um could just interfere and cause challenges with the treatment. So luckily this was uh discovered early on in the field piloting, not when we were in full scale operation. And we were able to remediate that by um installing cartridge filters. So the photo you see there um is an example of some of, some of those cartridge filters showing exactly what was being um removed prior to entering the vessels. Um, some other information that we learned from the um field scale pilot was that PFOA, given that it was the highest concentration, was certainly the driving compound. Um, I mentioned we incorporated um the prefiltration. Um, I mentioned we incorporated um the prefiltration at the sixty percent design stage. It's much easier to do it early on in the design versus having to retrofit or um implement a change order when you are in full scale operation. Uh, we did determine that there was no impact to corrosion control, so that was great. And you know, we were able to get that information over to our partners um at the DEP. Um, we did see initially from the pilot that there was no increase in arsenic levels during startup and we had a better idea of what our um change out frequency would be. We were hoping based on average flows for that facility. Um, that we could get roughly a year before we would have to uh do any sort of media change out. So our plan for treatment, we're going to build a brand new GAC facility that would be rated for twelve million gallons a day based on the yield of all of our active wells. This would consist of twenty granular activated carbon vessels. Um, these are configured in a lead lag configuration, meaning it flows through the lead vessel and then sequentially through the lag. So essentially ten pairs of vessels. Uh, because of these vessels, we would have to add on a pumping step to help get the necessary head to drive through the vessel, so we added on intermediate pumping. I'd mentioned those bag filters and then there were other ancillary upgrades that we did to the site um that were long needed. One of the items you'll see there is that connection to sanitary sewer. Um, this was a very uh remote site out in South Plainfield. That originally just had a small septic system for the uh single restroom that was on site. Uh, now knowing that there was going to be significantly more waste stream produced from backwashing these vessels and flowward flushing, flushing the vessels. Uh, we needed to add that connection to uh sanitary sewer. So just a quick schematic of that layout of the GAC vessels, you know, fairly large facility to store those vessels. Um. Each vessel is about twelve foot in diameter, uh, almost about thirty feet high, like twenty-seven feet high. Um, and each vessel is loaded with forty thousand pounds, so twenty tons of carbon in each vessel. Some of the challenges that we found um. Throughout the process was trying to mitigate long lead times. Um, so one of the ways that we were able to overcome that was by pre-procuring the vessel pairs, since that's a pretty specific. Um, device, you know, it's not like segments of pipe. Um, or you know, general items that um are, are held on the shelf like pumps and motors. Um, you know, these are pretty uh tailored, specific vessels. We made sure that we selected, uh, we went out to bid and we selected the um supplier of the vessels. Um, before we even went out, um. Before we even began full scale construction and that allowed us to pre-procure the vessels. Again, I mentioned ten pairs, twelve foot diameter, twenty-seven foot height. Um, and the bids were all inclusive of all of the process valves and piping that you see between um those two vessels. Other challenges that we found was utility relocation. Um, certainly. We did have um the luxury of having a fairly open site there. I did mention it was remote. Um, and you know, there were constraints with um wetlands surrounding the treatment, the existing treatment facility. Um, but certainly we know that there's a lot of utilities out there that are working in much tighter spaces trying to implement these solutions. Uh, and if you're building a brand new treatment plant and putting up and erecting a brand new facility, sometimes that means you have to relocate existing utilities. Um, so that was something that we needed to work and we actually broke that off as a separate contract. And did all that relocation um before we even began uh full scale. Construction um of the treatment facility, which helps save some time. On um the actual startup of the full scale facility. Some other challenges and unintended consequences, this was a well field that had been uh in service uh for. Decades and one of the things we learned is that that um residential development surrounding the well field. Um, was in wetlands area and we had essentially been de-watering that area for quite some time, so. When we did have to turn the wells off because we were exceeding that state standard. Uh, we found a rise in water levels around the site and it impacted, you know, you're getting complaints of. Uh, water in the basement for a lot of the residents. Um, so again, took a lot of. Phone calls and uh team meetings, but uh working with our partners at the DEP. Um, both on the uh drinking water and the clean water side. We were able to get the necessary temporary permits to actually just pump those wells and discharge them. Um, to the ground, to the surface water on site, which helped uh at least with temporarily de-watering that area. And alleviating some of the customer concerns. So back to the facility and some of our treatment targets, um, our goal was to be less than one half of the New Jersey maximum contaminant level for arsenic. So um, that is, uh, you can see it expresses milligrams per liter there, but in micrograms per liter, uh, the state standard is five. And our goal was to be at two and a half. Um, and then we had turbidity standards as well and, and a pH range. So the goal was after we put these vessels into service, we would flush them. Um, after all that carbon was unloaded and try and hit those targets. Unfortunately, there were some more challenges. Um, when we started up the facility, we were anticipating only needing to flush ten bed volumes worth of water, which equates to roughly four hundred thousand gallons. We found that in order to get the arsenic levels down below our target, we had to flush four point nine million gallons of water, almost a hundred twenty bed volumes. Um, the, that was not designed uh or factored into the design based on our field scale pilot. We thought we would need much less flushing, so. The uh onsite backwash tank was only sized for two hundred thousand gallons and we had a limitation on our sewer, sewer discharge. Um, so that caused some delays in our actual startup. Of our overall full scale operation. See here, it was uh quite a challenge getting some of those last vessels into the building, but once they were all in place. Um, we were able to get the facility online. Um, and. We did a phase startup, so we wouldn't have to change out all the media at once. That media has a certain absorptive capacity and once you reach that capacity. You have to remove it and dispose of it or regenerate it and put new media in. Um, as you can see there, we hit our one year target based on average flows through the plants. That was consistent. With what we found from the results of the field scale pilot, so we were happy about that. Um, and those first three vessels, five B, six B and ten B were the first three to be changed out. However, what we found. Um, was after our um. First round of change outs, we got, forgive me, it looks like there's a typo on the day of operation there. Um, but the important thing to note is between the total bed volume at change out. We originally went from anywhere from twenty-six to twenty-seven thousand bed volumes of water that were treated. To only sixteen to eighteen thousand bed volumes of water when we put those lag vessels online. Um, so the current belief is that. As those lag vessels were exposed um to the drinking water for the prior twelve months. Um, there's certainly other constituents in the water besides those regulated PFAS. There, we know there's unregulated PFAS. Um, you know, there's some speculation that um beyond the PFAS that the current standard methods are measuring. You know, there could be hundreds, if not thousands of other fluorinated species at really, really low background levels. So you know, this is. These are emerging contaminants. This is a developing field. We're learning a lot about it. Um, but we believe all of those background um constituents are using up some of the capacity of the medium, the lag vessels. So we went from originally having twelve months of service now down to six months of service for that second um. Set of vessels after we did the change out, uh, so significantly reduced operational time. Uh, we're still investigating that and you know, trying to ascertain what um. What might be contributing to that and what our options are. Is this just where we have to double the frequency of change outs, which drives up operational expenses? Um, or are there other things that we can do to help um alleviate that? But some of the key takeaways summarized, um, there's definitely tremendous value in having a robust bench scale and field pilot testing program. Um, you know, that's going to influence your design um and, and help you make the appropriate decisions before you're operating the facility. Um, pre-procurement of critical components can help mitigate those long lead times. Um, you know, we were building this treatment plant in the middle of COVID. So hopefully, knock on wood, that was the worst and, and things will only get better, but um it's just from. You know, running other uh, other capital projects, other capital improvements, we know that. There's certainly challenges with long lead times on critical components, so. Um, that was one of the strategies that we used to help mitigate that. Uh, additionally, I mentioned that proceeding with that general site work and utility relocation being performed prior to a hundred percent design helped with the schedule as well. Um, and the GAC bed life can vary significantly between the lead and the lag vessels, so it's something to keep in mind. Um, when you're budgeting and, and planning, planning your uh vessel change out. So that is all I had for our experiences with PFAS out at our groundwater facility. I know we have the panel later and certainly. Um, open to any questions if we have them.
All right, thank you a lot, Mark. Um, obviously you guys are very busy over there. You know, it's amazing how much goes in. To um, you know, protecting our water supply and also. Producing our water supply for the public. You know, many times I hear people saying, oh, my well is so good, uh, tastes so good. You never know what you're getting in that. You know, where community water is always a good product. And you know, it's people like Middlesex Water that makes it for us. So thank you very much, Mark, and I'll see you later on in the presentation. We are going to take a break at this point. We're going to take a ten minute break. No longer ten minutes. Heat up your coffee, heat up your tea. Please come back. We've got a great panel discussion in a little bit and then after that we'll be taking. Um, you know, questions, I should say comments from the public. So thank you very much for your participation. See you in ten minutes. All right, are we back on now?
I can see you.
All right, tell me when you're turning on. We're ready to go.
We are ready to go.
All right, thank you for all coming back. We want to keep this thing on schedule and get you all out of here. At the time we indicated. So with that, we are moving into the point of our presentation where we're having a panel discussion. You know, we've offered certain uh questions of our panelists to concentrate on. So we're going to have um Susan Rosenwinkle, who you heard from before. We're going to have Corey Stevenson, the environmental engineer, Bureau of Water Systems Engineering with the DEP, he's coming on. Uh, Mark Tayer, again, who you just heard from, Christian Smith, who you heard from. And we're going to have Ron Anastasio, who I've known for a long time. He's the executive director of Somerset Raritan Valley Sewerage Authority. And Virginia Wong, who is back now for the third time uh to speak with us on the issue of PFAS. So let me, let me give you a very brief. Background on these folks. You've already heard about Susan, you know, and her background. Christian knew his background, Mark and his background. Corey Stevens uh is an environmental engineer at the Bureau of Water Systems Engineering. His day-to-day tasks include review of drinking water related construction permits. Uh, corrosion control efforts and other measures related to public. He's worked closely on PFOs taking part in review and discussions. Of dozens of pilot projects, treatment works, discussion manufacturers prior to his employment with the EP. Mr. Stevenson, uh, worked on environmental consulting and worked to having a site such as Superfund sites. He also managed. The installation remains of dozens of residential treatment systems and all types of contaminants, including heavy instances on treated PFOs. Uh, Ron Anastasio. He is, I mentioned, is the executive director of the Somerset Raritan Valley Sewerage Authority. And they operate a twenty-three MGD water treatment facility in Bridgewater Township. One of the largest non-title freshwater discharges in New Jersey. And you know, he um, he graduated. Bachelor's, a science degree in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology in nineteen ninety. He's a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey since nineteen ninety-five. He holds DEPC for sanitary collection system operators license. And since two thousand and twenty-one, he's been a member of DEP's water and wastewater licensing board of examiners. He also serves on the board of the Association of Environmental Authorities since two thousand and nineteen and is currently second vice president. Ron has thirty-four years of wastewater experience. And Virginia Wong, Virginia Wong is the chief of water. Clean water regulatory branch of the Water Division of the United States. Environmental Protection Agency Region Two. Region Two covers New York. New Jersey, Puerto Rico, US Virgin Islands and eight federally recognized nations, Indian nations. In her current position, Virginia detects and manages the entire Clean Water Act Point Source Control Program. Water quality standards and dredging, sediments and ocean disposal. Virginia graduated with a chemical engineering degree from the City College of New York and has over thirty years of experience. In water quality, wastewater management, industrial waste pretreatment, permit and enforcement programs. So thank you for the crew um and, and offered to be on our panel. I guess. Some of the, uh, some of the questions that we had developed, we thought would be helpful. Uh, for Christian and also for Ron Anastasio. Is, is best practices for identification and reduction and elimination of the source. And your thoughts on that and how best to approach that issue? So Christian and Ron, if you'd like to jump in and talk about best practices and identification, reduction of source and elimination.
Okay, um. Christian, uh, would you like to go first or would you like me to jump in?
Um, I guess I can go first if you don't mind.
Sure.
Yeah, so. In Michigan, from a governmental perspective at the, the regulatory agency side. We have really focused on and tried to encourage the collaboration between the. The public utility or the treatment plants and the regulators. Um. We try to leverage the knowledge that we have of working across the state with other treatment plants that are dealing with PFOs contamination to help. Um, inform our understanding of where potential sources could be at any specific um investigation. Uh, we work with treatment plants to. Um, conduct those non-industrial u, or the industrial user surveys or the non-industrial user surveys. Um, we have found that it's important to look at other types of discharges as well, so not just your. Any industries that are in town, but it could be important to evaluate some of those non-categorical. Industries or those multi-use facilities, schools, uh, look for. The, any known or potential contaminated groundwater situations as well, uh, whether that be from a known. Um, two oh one or the A, a cleanup site. Or a uh, any fires that have been known to happen in the history of the towns and really leveraging that. Public knowledge to know if, so there's a fire that warranted the use of A triple F. Uh, there's any A triple F users on your collection system. And then where possible to leverage a facility sewer use ordinance that is potentially in place. Um, to see if there is a way for that cost to be offset from the treatment plant to require those dischargers. To characterize their waste stream. Uh, because we know that the wastewater treatment plants are performing a necessary public utility. Um, they're passive receivers, so where possible, it makes sense for that, for, it makes sense from our point of view to. Um, offset that cost from the public utility and the rate payers to the dischargers. Of, of potential P stuff, PFOs, whether they are using it in a process or it's a historical contamination. Or unknown discharge. Um, it's, it makes it, it's made sense to us where possible to try to offset that cost for the public utility. Um, and then when it comes to those co, two collection system investigations. To bracket out your collection system to one, rule out potential areas if you're not finding it in lift stations or in. Manholes to rule out potential areas of collection system, but then also to bracket your. Specific probable or possible sources to have an upstream and a downstream sample. Of the, of that potential discharger to identify, you know, we had, you know, six parts per trillion. And upstream of this discharger immediately downstream, we had two hundred and fifty parts per trillion. So then it's easier for the public utility to be like, we see right before you, there's no PFOs or there's low PFOs. Right after you, there's an increase in PFOs. And then work with the public utility to try to work with that discharger and see if they need to put treatment in place. Or to have some other process installed to try to work out in that situation. Um, so that's a. A regulator perspective and then I'll, I'll hand it over.
Thanks, thanks, Christian. Uh, so I just want to say that um. I, I and uh all of us uh in New Jersey, at least through the Clean Water Council and, and other um. Um, gatherings, uh, we've learned about Michigan and all the great work that uh. Uh, the great work that Christian and Michigan are doing. And um, Michigan really serves the model, I think, for um, for New Jersey certainly, so. Uh, we're definitely not as far along as uh, as Michigan is in uh, looking into the um. Uh, the sources, but I found that um, you know, we have found that uh. Uh, we're a delegated local agency and, and um, sending out the surveys to the industries. Uh, has been helpful. Uh, the nature of our service area particularly, we don't have a landfill uh in our service area, but other. Other of our peers in the state do and uh, obviously, you know, we have learned that those are hotspots for uh PFOs um. Contributions, so obviously going after um, starting a dialogue with those and going after monitoring on those sites and. And maybe potentially uh eventually exploring pretreatment those sites before it gets commingled with the. Um, with the rest of the domestic sewage and wastewater treatment plant is certainly uh beneficial. We do have a large cleanup site in our service area and we do have a, an ongoing dialogue with them and we do, um, there, we do have monitoring that they are doing sampling throughout their site. And um, um, we are keeping an eye on what those levels are. Um. So you know, it's, 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 this is a whole process, obviously. Uh, the last thing we want to do is just start by uh wholesale. Uh, wholesale treatment at the, at the treatment plant, you know, to control the sources. Really makes a lot of sense to certainly try to eliminate them. Uh, in some industries, you know, through substitution of products would be great. Yeah, whenever those opportunities present themselves. Also, um, you know. Pre-treatment of the effluent before it enters the system. If that opportunity presents itself, certainly like a landfill leachate would be great. Um, you know, for ours, it's a little harder because we don't have any outliers as far as contributors that we've found so far. We have. We've monitored a good chunk of our industries, the ones that are the higher risk. And moderate risk levels and we haven't found very large amounts of, of PFAS compounds, but. You know, it's an ongoing process and we're going to continue to monitor. And as we. Watch the technologies develop, every year there seems to be more and more momentum building as far as the. Treatment systems getting applied, watching what the water purveyors are doing is certainly a, a, a great thing too and. It's kind of like we're all getting more comfortable with the idea that, hey, this is the thing. And that there's going to be, uh, treatment systems applied in specific strategic areas. To cut down greatly what comes into the plant. The last thing we wanted to do was just let it come into the plant un. Unchecked and mixed with all the domestic sewage and, and then it's in the bio solids and it's in the effluent and, and we have to. We have to filter the whole plant. That's the last thing we want to do.
All right. Thank you, guys. That makes sense. Mark, you're up next. Um, you know, specific to, what's your concerns about PFAS management, you know, with your water system?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. We could probably spend the next couple hours here discussing that. But I, I guess maybe more relevant to the rest of the group would just be speaking about how we manage, you know, the waste streams, right, and the residuals. I think at this point, as an industry on the drinking water side, we've seen a lot of instances of successful. Treatment applications, Commissioner, that's right, said, I think, over a hundred permit applications currently in or approved for treatment systems. So. While it's a challenge and we're learning a tremendous amount, we know that there's technology out there that can get the compounds out of drinking water. Think the challenge is now, what is our long-term strategy of managing those calc strength compounds, you know, that don't seem to easily want to degrade? Um, and what is the best strategy for, um, long-term management destruction of those waste streams, whether it's in bio solids or just. As concentrate, um, being rejected, you know, just for some scale, just, uh, numbers. I know this is anecdotal evidence here. But the facility I mentioned, uh, if we average, let's say, eight million gallons a day flow through that facility. Was designed for up to twelve, but will average around eight. Uh, that means we serve roughly a population of eighty thousand from that facility if we're using the numbers of, you know, a hundred gallons per day per person. And we are projecting sixteen vessel change outs next year at forty thousand pounds each. That's six hundred forty thousand pounds of carbon. For eighty thousand people for an eight M G D facility. There are significantly larger facilities across. The state of New Jersey that are, uh, in the same boat wearing that are managing. You know, treatment facilities to remove PFAS. So that's a lot of carbon. Um, and how sustainable is that? So I guess that would be a first one would be how do we manage the waste streams? And second concern would be the sustainability of the current treatment options that we're seeing, which is the granular activated carbon and anion exchange. It's just. It's a lot to wrap your head around how much is needed to produce, uh, you know, the water that meets the current regulatory standards.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. All right, we have Corey Stevenson who, uh, from the E P. And, you know, it's kind of a unusual question, I guess, but if money was not a limiting factor. What would you recommend? I know it's always a limiting factor, but, uh, you know, just, just your thoughts, like what would be. The way to go if it was not an issue, if finance was not an issue.
One of the unique aspects of designing PFAS treatment for drinking water is that while cost is of course a significant driving factor. There are many other factors that need to be considered when designing treatment. There's not really a universal best fix or best treatment technology as each water system should weigh the various factors at their site. And finding the treatment that will work for them. The treatment type that a drinking water system selects can really depend on cost, water quality, space. Location, disposal options, and many other factors. Water quality can have a significant impact on PFAS treatment and could be one of the driving factors in choosing treatment. Waters with high concentrations of particulates may require pre-treatment in the form of cartridge or bag filtration as Mark had mentioned. This is more common in anion exchange designs because of the inability to backwash with anion exchange. Backwashing is a common strategy to remove particles that may build up on a media, which can lead to pressure issues and treatment inefficiency. But this is only a strategy that G A C can use. Therefore, if designing PFAS treatment, then it is important to understand the parameters that could have an impact on a media long term. Pre-treatment might even be necessary for parameters like iron or manganese. That can really cause havoc with PFAS treatment in higher concentrations. Available space and location of any treatment area is also a significant challenge. PFAS treatment often takes up a large amount of space and the treatment does not always fit within the existing buildings. This means that water systems now either have to install the treatment outside, which has its own share of challenges. Or they have to design a full new treatment building. But that isn't as always simple as just toss up a shed and call it a day. There might be wetlands. The proposed location might be in a flood hazard area or even surrounded by a protected area for endangered species. We've even seen one system navigate the wetlands and a flood hazard issues only defined. And over two hundred year old foundation when they started digging, which required a full historical preservation, reservation study. There is also the issue of owning the land as a lot of treatment buildings are on very tight lots with not much room for growth. This means either they start purchasing nearby land. Or they now need to run pipes to send that water to another location where the treatment can be installed. And as it has been mentioned already, disposal is also a challenge, particularly with membrane filtration. Membrane filtration such as reverse osmosis creates a waste stream that is heavily concentrated with PFAS. This creates a significant challenge with disposal and at this time in New Jersey, no water systems have been permitted or even proposed R O. At this time. This isn't a challenge, though, just with reverse osmosis as media treatments have wastewater. G A C and anion exchange resin require a significant rinse in on startup and backwashing. As Mark had mentioned at Middlesex Water Company. This water would not only need to be approved for discharge to a sewer if applicable, or it might need to be in a holding tank and shipped off site. And also, as Mark had mentioned, arsenic leaching from G A C can be problematic and take a significant. Initial rinsing. Manufacturers now have acid rinse media, which can reduce the number of bed volumes needed for initial rinsing. But it is at a much higher price. Um, and also, as Mark mentioned, it might be in a water system's best interest to conduct a bent study or pilot study to reduce uncertainty. In selecting treatment. Piloting can determine media or membrane life. Removal efficiency and also pre-treatment needs that can help to inform decisions when considering all factors. In an engineering evaluation. Leave lag, otherwise known as series operation or similar redundancies also critical as it not only protects public health. It also provides time for the operational staff to schedule media changeouts, follow breakthrough. And also to account for lab turnaround time. And on a topic of breakthrough, monitoring for breakthrough and pressure loss is a. Critical asset to ensure efficient operation of PFAS treatment. In summary, there is not real universal fix for PFAS in all scenarios. Everything depends on the unique circumstances for each drinking water system. Which is why the design and review of PFAS treatment can also be very extensive. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Thank you. That was. You know, really informative. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's an issue. I mean, money is always an issue when you come to these things, but also health, you know, is the regulating factor. And you have to, you have to proceed accordingly. Um, Virginia Wong, EPA. I got a couple of questions for you. And one of them is, what federal funds, talking about money, are available for PFAS treatment? What about assessment identification? Also, in the context of transitioning to a new administration. Do you anticipate any potential changes to the drinking water? M C Ls or any new standards for surface order? I know it's really early and, you know, we just don't know what's going to happen in the future. But your perspectives from the federal perspective on that, and again, thank you for coming back. You know, three years in a row to talk on this subject. We really look forward to your insight on this. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. I'm really privileged to be part of this council meeting here. And so for, to answer the first question, what federal funds are available for PFAS kind of treatment? Assessment and identification. Um, do, believe it or not, there is funding available and, um, I, I think it's already out there. In the past few years, I've talked about. Where to get these fundings. So there are basically two types of fundings from the federal, um, level. The first one is a clean water state. Uh, revolving fund and the second one is a drinking water state revolving fund. These are two major funding that is available. In two thousand twenty-one, um, there's a bipartisan infrastructure law. Was enacted in place by the federal administration. Now, that is a lot of money available for the infrastructure need, uh, and it appropriated ten billion dollar, billion with a B. In grants and, and forgivable loans to community to address PFAS contamination. Um, and other emerging contaminants. And one billion of those is provided through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And the four billion is provided through the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. So the rest of the five billion is provided through the emerging contaminant to small and disadvantaged community grant programs. Now, these, all these, all these grants are available for PFAS identification, assessment. And for installing, storing treatment. For, for the contaminant pollutant. With the, with the, um, Clean Water Emerging, uh, Contaminant Fund, there, the one billion. Is divided into five years. On the first year, when this first game enacted, uh, F I twenty twenty-two. Uh, we spent a hundred million on that. And then from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six, each year, we have two hundred and twenty-five million each year. So the funding is still available. It's not, um, done yet. We still have a couple of years to go to take advantage of that. And. If you go online to H, um, to the EPA, uh, EPA website, just type in C W, C W, uh. C W S R F, all the information, all the tools, all the resources are there. So take advantage of that. For the second question regarding the, in the context of, uh, transmitted, transmission to the new administration. Do you anticipate any potential changes to the drinking water M C L and also new standard for surface water? I wish I have the crystal ball and tell you what, what it might be and what the future have been stored for, I say. Um, so. I'd be very honest is that, um, it's certainly not appropriate for me to forecast. What the future like regarding the incoming administration. Each administration is different. Um, transitioning to a new administration is related to the Congressional Review Act. Which we have not seen anything yet at the, at the love at this, at the regional level. Um, so that's it. I really wanted to assure, um, the council and also the public that, um. Our mission of protecting water has not changed. Clean Water Act has not changed to restore and. Um, uh, to preserve the integrity of the water of the United States. So that has not changed. So my team at EPA and I are on this, on this job and we are not going anywhere. We're still going to be. Doing our job to protect and enhance the water, to help out with that state, protect, um, to support our state and also the water sector utilities. And also local communities and we, we have, um, we're spending a lot more time in connecting with the local community because, um, we think it's really important. To understand and how we can support them and in a very small way. Um, that's my answer, Tony.
Virginia, has there been? Monies coming into New Jersey from those, you know, those, those programs you talked about? Are we taking full advantage?
Yeah, I think so. Um, yeah, I think so. The state revolving fund, um, so, so the, the funding through the federal, it goes to the state and then. It's up to the state to how to, in, how to, um, allot those funding, those grants coming in and they approve the, the application. Um, I think, um, Sue and, um, the assistant, I mean, um, uh. And, and Mr. Director should, would know how to, how to get the, uh, get, how they allot this funding, how this work. Um, I, I'm pretty sure that's how it's going to work. The federal provided state and then the, the state will allot this funding to grants and forgivable.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we had a presentation in one of our council meetings about. You know, the revolving fund and the kinds of projects that are being supported. So that. You know, that's, that's really good, you know, and people that are out there listening. Keep track of that, you know, there might be funding available for projects that you folks are working on.
And it's not just funding. It's sometimes it's just technical assistance. Just help you, how you do, putting those application. Is this a good project? Is that a good project? There's tons of, uh, resources available. I, I can't stress enough. Every time I go to conference, I talk about this and, um, please take advantage of it. Don't, don't lose out the opportunity. All right. I shut up now.
Thank you much. Okay, we got Ron Anastasio and Mark coming back too and got a question for you and that is, what would be your best advice to D E P? On next step? So where do we go from here?
Thank you, Tony. Mark, would you like to go first or?
Within the time limits offered.
Okay.
I know that there's a lot that can and should be done.
Yeah, no, I understand. Mark, uh, you want to go or you want me to go?
No, please go ahead.
Okay, um, Tony and Sue, if it's okay, if I could just share my screen for, uh, uh, compliments. I just put together a few slides with. Uh, with what I thought would be, uh. Uh, advice for the D E P to consider. Oops. Okay, so the question of what advice would we, would, uh, would I, uh, give to D E P on how to perceive with PFAS? So my suggestion number one. I would say pause for now on including the criteria for P F N A, P F O A and P F O S in the Surface Water Quality Standards Amendment. Instead, first move to issue a mass NAGIFTES permit mod modification to add these three PFAS parameters. To semi-annual W C Rs for all the plants to gather influent and affluent data statewide. As the water purveyors, public and private, add PFAS removal technologies to the groundwater and surface water plants. Let's give these improvements time to work through the system to see the true effects of these reductions in wastewater treatment plants. Remember, much of the wastewater treatment plant influent is made up of water that comes out of faucet. And also, let's see what removal technologies develop or become refined in the coming years before wastewater treatment plants commit to a removal technology. Suggestion number two, consider that wastewater treatment plants are the least efficient place to remove PFAS. As, uh, Christian mentioned, um, you know, we don't want, and others have said, we don't want to, we want to keep it out of wastewater treatment plants. Because it's so much harder to deal with there. Wastewater treatment plants do not generate PFAS chemicals. They're contained in the influent. In the GIFTES permits, wastewater treatment plants typically have total suspended solids. Thirty, uh, parts per million weekly and forty-five parts per million monthly is limits. One of the most likely removal technologies to be used in a wastewater treatment plant is granular activated carbon or GAC. Calgon Carbon, one of the leading manufacturers of carbon for these systems. Provide guidelines for GAC systems where they indicate T S S will foul the carbon beds and a high degree of filtration. Ahead of the carbon bed is required. These requirements would result in the wastewater treatment plants essentially making drinking water. And I don't know if that's something we want to do, um, at this point. Suggestion number three, let's consider what we are learning from P V S C, the Sage Valley Sewerage Commissioners. P V S C is on the forefront of performing PFAS sampling in its system. At a recent PFAS working group meeting and tour of P V S C. We learned some key points. An estimated four percent of P, uh, P V S C's PFAS comes in from its liquid waste acceptance program. An estimated fourteen percent of P V S C's PFAS comes in from eighteen industrial pre-treatment permit connections. With a higher likelihood of PFAS. Of those eighteen connections, roughly half are from landfills. And of these landfills, there's one landfill that contributes nine percent of P V S C's total PFAS. From this, we could estimate that therefore roughly eighty percent of P V S C's PFAS. May be coming in from domestic sewage sources such as homes, schools, restaurants, et cetera. May be coming in from domestic sewage sources such as homes, schools, restaurants, et cetera. And remember, PFAS is in many consumer products which end up in landfills. Suggestion number four. Consider the cost to local systems. A June two thousand twenty-three press release from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Talked about a study they had conducted where they described the PFAS cleanup costs from wastewater as unaffordable. Key findings of this study are as follows. Removing and destroying PFAS from water and biosolids. Leaving Minnesota's wastewater treatment facilities could cost between fourteen billion and twenty-eight billion over twenty years statewide. PFAS can be bought for fifty dollars to a thousand dollars per pound, according to the MPCA estimates. But cost between two point seven million and eighteen million per pound. To remove and destroy from municipal wastewater, depending on the facility size. And smaller wastewater treatment facilities would face. Per pound costs over six times greater than the larger facilities due to economies of scale. And the new short chain types of PFAS are more difficult. And up to seventy percent more expensive to remove and destroy compared to the old long chain PFAS. And Minnesota's population is about sixty percent of New Jersey, so our our costs will be higher. Suggestion number five. Consider lobbying the federal government for the stopping of the production of all PFAS compounds. Like the ban of production of PCBs in the late nineteen seventies. The best way to get PFAS compounds out of society is to cease their production. As we all know, PFAS compounds are in many products people use in their daily activities. But in the meantime, a good start is to employ methods like source reduction in industrial discharges. Plus waiting to see the reductions in drinking water, which should also bring down PFAS levels in wastewater treatment plant influence. Treatment at wastewater treatment plants would not be the place to start. Let's see what we are dealing with after these other steps are done. And remember, wastewater treatment plant agencies really appreciate being part of the dialogue and look forward to continue. Working with NJDEP in the future on this matter. Thank you. That's all I have, Tony.
All right, Mark, would you like to share your thoughts?
Wow, yeah, what what a tough act to follow, but but fantastic points. Made and and I I appreciate that he came, you know, with data and really highlights a lot of the things that we need to consider. And hopefully the department will consider as we make these changes moving forward. You know, sharing a slightly different perspective, coming from primarily the drinking water side. I guess I'd offer DEP the same advice that I'd give to anyone in the industry when we're talking some of these large scale challenges that we're facing today. With the amount of effort and and investment that it's gonna take to address these challenges. The only way we're gonna solve it is by working together. You know, at the end of the day, we're all united by the same mission, whether it's protecting the environment or ultimately protecting public health. So I think as long as we keep that shared goal at the forefront as we navigate the issues together, we'll we'll find solutions that work at the end of the day. And that provide the best solutions for the customer and and the most cost effective solutions. I think that was kind of a lot of the undertone. Of what Ron was getting at is gonna be expensive no matter how we get it out, but what is the most cost effective way? That we can manage this contamination and get these chemicals out. Protect public health. So I just I think fostering that mentality, we can make sure that we implement the most cost effective approach in the most practical manner. Shifting tones a little bit to compliance, just, you know, as we discussed compliance, again, it's important to remember that the core mission is not. Checking a box to say we're compliant. It's protecting public health or in the case of on the clean water side, protecting the environment. But, you know, unfortunately, current regulations can sometimes hinder that goal. Just we had unfortunately experienced that firsthand when we were forced to issue public notice for facility that had been taken offline. You know, it was pertaining to New Jersey's implementation of maximum contaminant levels for PFAS on the drinking water side. And, you know, what it really came down to was ambiguous federal language mandated a reissuance of that notice. Which caused significant public concern and confusion, even though we had previously notified our customers that the facility was shut down and that risk, they were no longer exposed to that risk. So that's an instance where compliance did not equate to protecting public health. The public was not any safer for getting those reissuances of notices. So I just would strongly urge the department to. Remember that undertone, you know, there are there are regulations that we have to comply with them and, you know, we understand that as one of the regulated entities and we will do our best. To work with the regulatory agencies to comply. But when it comes down to interpreting the requirements of federal regulations, you know, I I think. The room for interpretation in some areas, it's important to remember that we're here to protect public health. Not just to check that box and say, well, we have to reissue it until the initial violation is resolved. And I think that's that's all the advice that I could give to the department.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Ron, and also, you know, thank you, Mark. Mark, we're gonna keep you on though. For the next question too. We want to ask you and also Christian, if you could just speak a little bit about. You know, what can we do today to plan for the next five to ten years in the future? Like, how should we prepare ourselves for what to expect?
Right, right. I I think I did touch a little bit on this towards the tail end of my presentation. But just get getting started as soon as possible, get started today. You know, we see the writing on the wall. You know, certainly on the drinking water side, we know New Jersey luckily has been a leader with setting these standards and being a little bit ahead of the curve. We know that there's new federal regulations coming that lower those standards even further. So for those utilities that, you know, did not have to necessarily install treatment to comply with the state regulations, but might be. Required to install treatment as part of the proposed federal regulations. I would just say it's critical to get the ball rolling. You know, depending on the complexity, Corey. Touched a a lot on the different challenges that you might face depending on the treatment technology. And the merit of getting started and doing your bench scale and pilot scale, field pilot testing. It's important to get that started today. You know, we're all aware of the long lead times. I touched on that a little bit in my presentation as well with some of those critical components. Those are not. You know, in stock with McMaster car or Granger on the shelf items. These are a lot of times custom fabricated. Items with significantly long lead times. So I imagine that's only going to continue to. Worsen as more utilities move towards the path of installing treatment. So. Definitely my recommendation for planning in the future is get started today and a lot of the. Ambiguity or uncertainties with how those rules will be implemented, they're that's gonna get sorted out regardless, but. Better to start today and at least have a plan in place so you're prepared.
Thank you. Yeah, it makes sense. Christian?
Yeah, I think. Mark really hit the nail on the head on some of those getting. Getting started earlier rather than later is going to be. Going to be a very beneficial moving forward. I think as we've seen with new data emerging, all the PFAS research is going on is that. The reference doses and the toxicology data keeps moving some of those. Keep moving the math lower and lower for what's deemed safe or what the math shows for. Like the maximum contaminant level compared to MCLG that came out with the federal, the post-federal drinking water standards. That it's better to get started and to start looking for potential ways to bring those concentrations down. Before it runs up to a deadline to not comply is required. Also, like Mark was saying, if you're not currently required to. Do any sort of PFAS monitoring or looking for PFAS, you're not necessarily. Immune to having any PFAS issues down the road if you're a a small public utility or a small treatment plant with. Just residential hookups or maybe just a few small businesses, you're not necessarily not going to have. Many PFAS concerns in your collection system. It's important to try to get ahead of it as much as you can to. If possible, make it a slower process for trying to bring down those concentrations instead of. Waiting till later, we have to drop, we have to drop down a large, a large amount in your PFAS concentration to be able to achieve. Compliance. And. Also, when possible, keep up on other other potential emerging contaminants that are. Getting published on or being talked about in the news. PFAS is a big one that's gonna be around for a while, but it wouldn't surprise me. Or I would expect that there's gonna be other things that continue to emerge like what we've seen with PFAS that are. Going to have issues. So. From a perspective of like talking to a public utility, you know, you're you're proud of your product and you're proud to. Serve your community as as civil servants or working for a public utility. So keeping up on that any changes we could see down the road and just trying to get get a head start. It's good in Michigan and New Jersey that we've. Been able to start to implement some of these MCLs or these goals. Prior to some federal regulation coming out, so we try to work to start to rat slowly ratchet down those concentrations. And I would expect that those goals are are gonna continue to get lower and be harder to achieve. So starting earlier and. Using as many tools as you can to try to bring down those concentrations without necessarily having to resort to end of pipe. Treatment is is the goal, but. Yeah, getting a head start and getting the ball moving on finding PFAS in the collection system or. Starting to adjust PFAS is gonna be. Very beneficial. And for a public utility, I I think reviewing a sewer use ordinance. For if you have language in there to allow you to. Require. Use sewer users to characterize their waste stream is an important aspect to have in there. Even if you aren't an IPP related wastewater treatment plant, updating your ordinances to allow you to. Potentially offset some of the costs and not be required to foot the bill with all of the PFAS sampling is gonna help your budget long term. It's these PFAS PFAS samples are expensive. And if you start being required to having to do, you know, three times annual or monthly monitoring that can really. Shoot up your cost. And if you're not a dedicated, if you're not a facility that has a dedicated budget for this type of. Testing and it's sprung on you, it can really cause challenges. So. But from a Michigan perspective, that's some of the aspects we we use when we try to talk to public utilities for how to. Try to get ahead of this or how to tackle their current problems they may be having.
Thank you. You know, just want to say honestly, between our presentations that we had before. And the people on the panel, you guys are really good, you know, very informative. Interesting to listen to and, you know, they hear this perspectives between the federal, you know, issues, Michigan's issues, you know, New Jersey, what we're doing. It's it's really very informative and I thank you guys. Really so much. We're gonna get ready to start our public comment, but first. I just want to give a big, you know, shout out to the staff at DEP that staff to the Clean Water Council and to the Clean Water Council members. I mean, we come together once a month to discuss these issues, advise DEP on various things. Learn a lot from each other about what we're doing. And the staff has kept us together and brings this information, makes us think. And it's I'm I'm really pleased to be on it and involved in it. And I think we do a good job and I hope you guys out there listening, I think we do a good job too. And we have a good turnout today for our public hearing and only like two people dropped off along the way. So that's really good. I'd like to, you know, identify the folks at the DEP staff that staffs and services, our council. Can kind of, you know, just highlight and wave. So John, Sue, Christine and Jennifer, if you guys can just kind of let us know you're out there. I see Sue.
My pleasure, Tony.
We're out here. You're welcome.
Thank you. You guys are the best. Really, we couldn't do without you. And, you know, really, we've had representation over the years. You guys are the best of the bunch. Okay, so. With that, we're pretty much, yeah, we're only, we're actually a couple of minutes early, which is unusual for any sort of. An agency running a meeting, but with that said. We're ready then for a public comment, which is a focus of our meeting. And as you know, I mean, the commissioner was here, you have key people at DEP are here. We're here, you know, your testimony is being recorded. If you're not going to testify today, do it in writing and get it to us by January the fifteenth. Next year, twenty twenty-five already. You know, please also keep your comments to three minutes. We want to try to get in as much as we can. If you have a an extremely important comment you have to make after three minutes. Save it till the end. If we have some time left, we'll give you a few more minutes to do so. So with that and with staff behind me there, can you then set up the folks that are gonna comment? And please identify who's up first.
Yes, Peggy Gallows is up first and just so everybody knows you can. Raise your hand, use the raise hand function and we'll try to take them in order. As well as just please state your name, what you represent. Then if you don't mind, also maybe dropping that in the chat, that would be helpful as well. All right, thank you, everybody. So Peggy is up first.
Okay, thank you, everybody. My name is Peggy Gallows. I'm the Executive Director of the Association of Environmental Authorities. We are a trade organization representing government agencies that provide drinking water, wastewater and solid waste waste services. Most of the population in state gets served by one of our members in one way or another. Most of our members are authorities, but we also have state agencies and municipal systems as well. I appreciate the chance to talk about this important topic at today's hearing. As everyone here knows, AEA members don't cause PFAS contamination. But with our colleagues across the state, we've been working over the last ten years to understand it. Its presence in water, wastewater and biosolids and how it may be removed and destroyed. As AEA drinking water members began to monitor and treat to meet New Jersey's MCLs. Our wastewater members collaborated with the DEP on PFAS source identification and minimization. Assisting the DEP with voluntary sampling. AEA worked with the NJDEP on sampling protocols and data collection. NJDEP Commissioner Sean LaTiret issued an administrative order, as was referred to earlier, that limits enforcement involving. The voluntarily collected data. The Clean Water Council asked what our concerns specific to PFAS management and water and wastewater are. Our response is that our concern is found in the question itself. The NJDEP and perhaps our society as a whole. In the United States may be defining and approaching the PFAS problem too narrowly. Of course, it is necessary and appropriate to develop policies and techniques. For reducing contamination in water, wastewater and biosolids. AEA supports regulations of these that are rooted in science and standards that are measurable and identifiable. We are deeply concerned that recent of recent indications that the NJDEP anticipates proposing. Stream criteria for two PFAS chemicals that are far below what technology can detect. I reiterate Ron Anastasio's advice that we engage in more sampling and monitoring. Of PFAS in waste. Focusing on water and wastewater and not focusing enough on the proliferation of PFAS chemicals in the environment. Risks oversimplifying the problem. People need to understand the complexity of the problem. Removing it from water and wastewater won't make PFAS go away. As Ms. Rose. Ms. Rosenwinkel said earlier, more research is needed. If the NJDEP wishes to address PFAS effectively, it must broaden its idea of source control to. Embrace a phase out of PFAS chemicals. So that our water and our air and our soil and our bodies are free of PFAS chemicals. A U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Agency for Toxic Substances and Diseases Registry Report. Released last week. Used data from Delaware and Massachusetts. It said that many materials and products are used in everyday life. With PFAS, information on the contribution of non-drinking water PFAS sources to exposure is sparse. The report indicates that as much as eighty percent of the PFAS chemicals in our bodies may be coming from dust and household projects, products like makeup. Our advice to the NJDEP is to please follow up on that study in New Jersey. As AEA AEA members participate in the Division of Water Resource Management PFAS Working Group. The goal of the group is to identify gaps in communications about PFAS and to work together to develop regulations. We suggest you broaden the working group to to or broaden the working group or create a coordinated set of groups. To work on PFAS chemical contamination across water, air, soil and other areas with regard to water.
Can you wrap up in like ten seconds or so? So we can, you can you can come back later if you need.
Okay, well, why don't I just finish later then?
Okay, all right, thanks. We had somebody, we have somebody in the queue. All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Mohammed?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me? Just want to make sure I can hear. Okay, so my 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 name is Dr. Mohammed Aborf. I'm with Hazen and Sawyer. Here in our offices in Philadelphia under Biosolids Overall Practice Lead. I I just want to comment on the. Basically, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency report that was referenced. report that was referenced. We, I worked on that report and specifically on the biosolids part that was published this, I think, past June or so. Want to make a correction regarding the biosolids. The technologies for removal and destruction of PFOS from biosolids really leaves or result in a more than ninety-five percent reduction in mass and volume. And with the beneficial or disposal use of, of these material, the reduction in the mass can pay for the technologies when those technologies are fully proven. So I just want to make that distinction of the cost between biosolids removal cost versus PFOS removal cost from wastewater affluent. That is an add-on process for biosolids. These processes are inherently removing all the organic material from the biosolids resulting in either biochar or an inert material. So just want to make that distinction. I'll, I'll put in the comments, January fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We do not have any hands raised at the moment or any names in the chat. So I'll give a couple of seconds or so and then allow Peggy to finish her testimony unless other people would like to jump in real quick.
All right, Peggy, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again. So as I was saying, we have a working group, a PFOS working group that the Division of Water Resource Management convened. It's a great working group. It's working on gaps in communication about PFOS. We suggest that the work of the group be actually broadened across all of the areas where PFOS is of a, of concern. We advise the DEP to set surface well water quality standards that are at detectable levels and to avoid moving ahead with regulations that are not implementable. Our concern is that dollars spent on technically infeasible ways to address PFOS will deprive our society as a whole of the resources it needs to rid us of the plague of PFOS. We urge the DEP to conduct public education that fully explains that problem and does not break PFOS proliferation into silos that suggests that addressing it in water fixes everything. AEA supports increased state and federal grant for water and wastewater to address removing and destroying PFOS chemicals. We also strongly support state and federal level efforts to phase out the use of these chemicals. States that have banned intentionally added PFOS products include Maine, California, Colorado, Connecticut, Hawaii, Maryland, Minnesota, New York, Rhode Island, Vermont and Washington. The European Union has taken broad action against PFOS chemicals. There are currently bills proposed in New Jersey. For example, one which establishes requirements, prohibitions and programs for PFOS. Unless we do something about the conveyor belt of PFOS coming endlessly at all of us, the health and environmental risks will continue. Thank you. We will be submitting written and more detailed comments later. Thanks.
Thank you, Peggy.
All right. At this point, bring your comments. I know we always get a flood of written comments afterwards, which is good, but we'd like to hear you too. As you know, this is being recorded and you're, you have your opportunity to make your comments live. You know, again, your concern specific to PFOS management as practices for identification, reduction, elimination. What's the next steps? What should we be doing? You know, this is your opportunity to make it known. So we still have, most of the people are still online. Anybody else want to present and give their public comments at this point? Okay, that being said, please make your comments in writing and submit it again before January the fifteenth. The council is going to be considering all these comments and formulating recommendations to the department after, after that period, after we get everyone's comments. So thank you again and thank you to our presenters. You all did a great job. We learned a lot today. And thanks for all the folks that signed into, you know, to, to listen to our presentation. With that, I would then say, last chance? No. Okay, so we'll conclude our public hearing at this point, twelve oh nine. And if I could ask the council members to stay online so we can discuss any further next steps that we're going to take. Thank you all. Have a great day.